We'll call this meeting to order. This is the North Miami Planning Commission, set for Tuesday, June 3, 2014, at 7:00 p.m. We are meeting in council chambers. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call the board members, please.
Charles Ernst.
President.
Kenny Eich.
Uh, he's excused.
Gene Castor.
Present.
Jason James.
Here.
Bill Pravatell.
Uh, Bill is running late. Car broke down. He's on his way, hopefully.
Mr. Chair, we have a question.
And, speak of the devil, here he is. He has arrived, let the record reflect, Bill Pravatell has just made it in.
Okay. Sorry for the delay.
Quite all right. Okay, uh, Cheryl called for approval of the minutes of May 6, 2014.
Chairman move for approval?
Mr. Ernst moves for approval. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, but Mr. Pravatell, all in favor?
Aye.
Minutes are carried. Any communications tonight? No? Okay. Continued public hearings, there are none, so we go to item five, public hearings. First item, PCO 6-14. "A Resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of North Miami, Florida, Approving Fiscal Year 2014/2015 Action Plan Under the Community Development Block Grant (CDBG) and Home Investment Partnership Grant (HOME). Programs Providing for an Effective Date and for All of the Purposes." Staff report, please.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Staff is recommending that the Planning Commission approve the proposed action plan and forward their recommendation to the mayor and council for final consideration and transmit it to U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for its adoption. And, from staff, we have our CDBG administrator available to answer any questions.
All right, thank you very much. At this time, we'll open the public hearing, and we'll listen to the CDBG administrator, and then take any comments from the public that there may be. Yes, ma'am? State your name.
Good evening. Carolyn Francis Royer, CPND.
Okay.
Okay, the Department of Housing and Urban Development provide entitlement funds to the city as an entitlement, and this year, for CDBG, our allocation is $763,029.7 and $215,093.3 for our home funds. The CDBG funds are a small decrease by 4%, and the home funds are a small increase of 7% for this year. As a part of the planning process, we had community meetings at the Griffin Center and the Sunkist Grove Community Center to solicit feedback from the public, and for this year, we're going to do housing activities, public service, public facilities, and administrative activities.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Ernst.
Good evening. Out of the $114,000 is allocated to the CDBG Public Services, nonprofit community-based organizations, and is that the Youth Opportunity Board Program, the YOB?
Yes.
How much of that funding is actually going to the nonprofit community-based organizations?
$90,000.
$90,000?
Yes.
So, and that comes up when, for us to review that?
That's usually in October.
October?
Yes.
Okay. So, is that a decrease, or about the same amount as last year?
It's an increase. Last year, we had $74,000.
Okay.
So, it's an increase.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Do any of the commissioners have any questions for staff? All right, hearing none. Is there any member of the public wishing to speak to this item? And I see no members of the public charging forward. I hear no thundering heard, I see no rising cloud of dust, therefore, the public hearing is closed. Commission discussion. I'll go to my left.
Nothing.
Mr. Pravatell, anything?
I'm okay.
All right, to my right, Mr. Ernst.
Oh, thank you.
I'll move for approval.
All right, move for approval. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Well, everybody's second, not me. Well, all right, very good movement by, uh, James Castor.
Actually, Gene.
Gene Castor, sorry. Ah!
It's okay.
Seconded by...
Jason James.
Jason James. You know?
It's late.
Yeah. Their mind doesn't work like that anymore. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, that item carries. Now, let's see here. PCO 7-14, "A Resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of North Miami, Florida, Authorizing the Issuance of a Conditional Use Permit for the Proposed Expansion and Redevelopment of the Winston Water Treatment Plant, in accordance with Article 3, Section 3-405 of the City of North Miami Code of Ordinances Land Development Regulations, Providing for an Effective Date and for All of the Purposes." Staff report, please.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Staff requests that the Planning Commission recommend approval of the proposed resolution and conditional use permit for the proposed expansion of the Winston Water Treatment Plant in accordance with Article 3, Section 3-405 of the Land Development Regulations (LDR), and forward said application to the city council for final approval. Public Works Director is present here, from the Public Works Department, to answer any questions off the board.
Mr. Chair, as a point of order, this item being that it's a consideration for a conditional use permit, it is a quasi-juridicial in nature. I would have to give anyone speaking tonight on this item the oath. That includes you, Mr. Whistler.
All right, proceed, counselor.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you provide is the truth?
Yes.
The whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. You may proceed.
Thank you very much, sir. Please state your name and rank.
My name is Whistler Pierre Lewis. I'm the interim Public Works Director.
All right, sir. Do you have a report for us, or any particular information?
Just a little background, I presented the LUPA and the rezoning to you a few months ago, and we were, the recommendation was to go out and meet with the homeowners association at Sunkist Grove, which I did, and we received feedback from the community there. We implemented all of their feedback, took that into consideration, went to the DRC, got approval from the DRC, and now we're proceeding with the conditional use permit.
All right.
And, of course, this is for the water treatment plant, and the two sites that, and this is, there's an existing site and a new site, which we're proposing to put storage tanks on.
All right, for the record, we'll open the public hearing at this point, invite anyone from the public who is in attendance to come forward. "I hear no thundering heard, I see no cloud of dust, there is no one here to speak to this," so we will close the public hearing and open it for commission questions. Do members of the commission have questions for staff? Yes, sir, Mr. Ernst.
I want to direct us to staff. In the conclusion, often were listed items that, conditions for the applicant, and since this is the city, I would take it that some of these conditions are pending for approval, or have all of them, have, do all of them have to be met before we can approve them? In other words, you have stated that use permit approving the improvements and expansion of this facility is subject to the following conditions, and you've listed three, and I just wanted to make sure that the three conditions are either being addressed on the item, or they are complete?
Actually, there are 14 conditions in the conditional use permit.
There what?
14 conditions in the conditional use permit.
14, but I see three listed here that were given, under the, the subject to the following conditions. One, that the applicant shall comply with all the conditions.
Yes, that, yeah.
Listed in Exhibit 1. And that the applicant shall comply with all the conditions listed in the attached DRC, and also that the precise plan and conditional use permit is, of course, subject to approval.
Yes, sir.
But all the other conditions, is it necessary that we know that those conditions have all been met in order to approve this, or how would that?
Okay. The three conditions that are part of the conclusion of the staff report relate to, number one relates to the conditional use permit itself.
Okay.
Which are conditions for this, for this project, is property-specific conditions. Some of them have been met, some of them will be met, and they must be met.
Okay.
Okay? Second one will, will be the DRC conditions, so they have to be met. The DRC of the conditions, when they went through the DRC process, they were asked to do revisions to their plans. The, the project was required to go, was required to go through certain processes, such as unity of title requirement. Those have been met.
Okay.
And then the final precise and conditional use permit shall be subject to approval by city council, which is the third condition, and from here, once this board decides that it is adequately satisfied, and the application goes to the city council, then that, that's contingent upon the city council approval.
And then the items that the director brought up, with regards to the public input, was that any part of the conditions for approval? And is it listed that as such in a record that, you indicated that you said you implemented?
Yes, we, at the community meeting, I passed out feedback sheets, or comment sheets, and the, the only, well, the main comment that I got back was that they wanted local jobs.
Okay. All right. But nothing related to...
So, it, it wasn't really something that I could incorporate in the, in the drawings.
Nothing related to zoning matter, or to the plat?
Right.
Or the, or the...
Right, nothing...
...specifications of the...
Right.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much. Do we have any other questions for staff?
Comments? Just general comments?
Comments, yes, you can make comments.
Yeah, I just wanted a general comment. I was part of the Sunkist Grove Homeowners Association meeting that Whistler went to, he attended. He answered all the questions, especially to the neighbors that were surrounding the plant, and I think it was a great job at reaching out to the community. I think that even though, you know, this is a municipal project, you know, we should hold ourselves to the same standards that we hold private development, and so I just want to commend your department for that, and for you taking the time out, after hours, to make sure the community, especially the surrounding area, was addressed, or their concerns were addressed, so.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much. Jason, Bill, anything?
Yeah, if I could, I'd like to bring your attention to sheet G-08A, and it's a proposed site plan, and I know that the area is there, but if we look at the, the more northern triangular piece, you can see that there are two tanks delineated, the proposed 1.5, I guess, million-gallon tanks. Could you also, before these are issued to the space just below the right tank, articulate where the future, potentially future tank would go? There's a big blank green space there, and I know it's intended for the expansion, but if we could lay it out now, you might find that the parking in that triangular parcel might shift a little bit to the north, might be able to straighten the road out, but at least we would also have the peace of mind, knowing that a third tank in that location will not require disruption to whatever supplemental services there are, like that parking lot, or if anything else should be put on that, that site. Is that clear?
Well, what you're asking for, Bill, is, is some assurance that there'll be enough room...
Yeah.
...to put a third tank if it becomes necessary, without having to shift the parking lot.
Okay, right, right here. So, it's, it's, I'm sure it's going to be the same size, it'll probably be a dotted circle or something, but to, for future use, as an expansion tank, not in contract.
Okay.
But as I'm saying, as you put that in there, this parking lot may adjust slightly for that third tank.
Okay.
So, if we could do that in advance, as opposed to disrupting it in the future, that would be a savings to the community.
Does the city envision a third tank?
No, not at the moment.
Not at the moment.
Well, not at this time, but say, 10 years, 15 years down the road.
Currently, we have capacity for 9.3 MGD. These two storage tanks exceed what's required by the Health Department as far as storage, so we are pretty much maxed out at the moment, by, by our permit requirements and by the regulatory agencies, as far as what's required to store.
So, effectively, there's a lot more than just building a third tank.
Right.
A lot of capacity has to be, a lot of other things would have to happen.
Exactly. We'd have to expand our water service areas significantly to require a third tank.
Well, this, this goes as a follow-up to a couple things, not just a conversation that we had at our meeting with Alin Gani, who was, at the time, Public Works Director, and who would agree that that was, you may have even mentioned that, was the third tank location, but just common sense says that, you know, if we're looking to expand our downtown, and there's just general growth in the area, we may be fine for the next five, 10 years, but maybe 15 or 20 years, you may want the expansion. But it's not just that. It's not just expansion. Suppose you had a problem with one of the two tanks that required it to become inoperable while it's being repaired, you'd have the option of setting up that third tank if we need to, without truly disrupting the service. So, at least you'd be planning ahead that way as well. So, if it could be, as I said, if it could at least be outlined, and not in contract, I think we'd do ourselves a favor of not getting in a bind in the future.
Okay.
Does raise a question, did you provide the space without having to move the parking lot for the third tank, if it becomes necessary?
We, we did not consider a third tank in that location. However, we can make any adjustments that are necessary to provide the space that'd be required for a third tank.
Probably might, might be considered a smart move to maybe shift your parking lot a little further north, in order to be certain that you have enough room to put in a third tank without incurring more capital expense than would be necessary, because things can happen that are unforeseen.
Yes.
Yes, there could be mechanical failures with one or more of our tanks, there could also be fewer, future expansion of capacity for the city, and the demand could be there in a decade.
It would also lessen that goose-neck turn.
And also, you may not necessarily be that X amount of spaces for that parking lot, so therefore, you might be able to cut down on the amount of spaces. I don't know what the code is based on, is part of, what you base your number of parking spaces for, but, you know, it's evident that, again, parking may not necessarily, you may not need that number of spaces for all your vehicles.
If it shifts, it looks like everyone could be retained anyway, preserved.
Yeah, all we're suggesting is reshape that road a little bit, make sure you have enough room to drop a third tank in there if it becomes necessary. That's a, do I assume that that is the recommendation of the Planning Commission?
Yes, yes, definitely, because you have to expect the unexpected.
So, the Planning Commission is formally recommending that you...
I'm with that.
...shift that road a little bit further north, and make a, make certain that you've got room to drop a third tank in if circumstances warrant in a decade, or, or two, if it becomes necessary.
Okay. I'd like so, I'd like so, I'd also like to add that we do have a multiple interconnects with Miami-Dade, we have an interconnect with North Miami Beach, and one with Opa-Locka. These interconnects are used to supplement our system in case of emergency situations.
Of course. They might also need...
An entire story. Yeah, I guess there could be a possibility that Miami-Dade, North Miami Beach, Opa-Locka, and North Miami...
Who never knows?
...still have water, so...
Crazy times.
We will shift, as you've recommended.
We need the fresh water as the salt water rises.
Yes, you know, any number of things could happen out there, so...
Better to be safe.
All right, so that, so staff, that is a recommendation of the Planning Commission, that we consider shifting the road and parking lot a little further north, in order to ensure that there's enough room to put another 1.5 million-gallon tank on that vacant land parcel, okay?
Okay.
And excepting for that, does any members of the commission have any other questions for staff?
Nope.
And if not, we'll call for a motion.
Actually, I do, if I may.
Yes, you do, all right.
It, it really pertains to the administration building, and you can see that on, on sheet L3A, which is actually the landscaping sheet, but it shows the potential of what that might, might be, and what that might look like.
It says D.
And you could see, it's, it's sort of nondescript, a little bit of a Mediterranean style. In terms of the site plan, it is a square building on a curved corner, and it sort of projects into the corner, sort of goes beyond the setback and what would, a moment might naturally feel as a buffer zone at that corner, because it's at the end of a street as well. And the street approaches it, and does a Y, and splits off. I don't know if it's possible, but I'd like to request of, of the commission and our chairman, if we might be able to, if it's, if it's possible, to take a look at a, a video, a YouTube video, which was created by the, I believe it's the Tourist Bureau of the City of Columbus, Indiana. I believe it's queued up by Adonia, and what it shows is something that I've talked about many times over the years, a city that really takes its design, its design responsibilities very seriously, and how they've been able to achieve a great amount of high, high quality of life through their process. The video is actually 15 minutes, this particular one, of which maybe 10 minutes are particularly suitable to get the idea across, and it really pertains to everything that our, our city does, and has the potential of doing, yet it particularly pertains to the fact that in this city of Columbus, Indiana, which is 40,000 people, and we're 60,000 people, in this city of 40,000 people, they have this history of 70 years of great landmark buildings, particularly the public infrastructure. That would be your schools, the firehouses, water treatment plants, all these other things, and it has spread out, not just, and the post office, it's not just that, but it has spread out into the public, the private sector, and it's created this incredibly rich, like an oasis in the, in the Midwest, rich environment, which is not, I must stress, this is not a case of good urban design, this is object design, but in the fact that there are these series of objects that have been undertaken over, you know, every year or so for the last 70 years, there might be something that could be gained from it. And if we adopted something like that, where we give more interest to something that we think is oh-mundane, something like this building, which is, rather than it being sort of compromising, or an infringement to the immediate neighborhood, if it was something a little bit more enlightened, might actually be able to increase the value of that particular neighborhood. And, you know, we sort of go on, and we have a tendency to just pass a lot of what becomes before us, but maybe, and as we spoke last time, maybe, maybe now's the time to start to say, we really demand a higher standard. Not to stop the project by any means...
Certainly not, yes.
...but to get something better, we can do something better, and this would be a way of possibly witnessing that.
All right, let's address it this way, Bill. The, in discussions with the, our Assistant City Attorney here, to be able to make the video part of the Planning Commission, several things come into play. Partly is budget, because the, the vendor that does our recordings, that's an extra billable cost. Now, what we have to do here is, the commission has to essentially have a motion and a vote to put it on the agenda for next month, so it becomes advertised as part of the agenda. Once advertised, and built into the program, piece of cake to watch it, and I think it would be a good thing to do.
Okay.
I did see it today. It makes some really, really good points, and it ought to be part of our agenda, and it ought to be part of the program that people at home can sit back and watch. But we need to have a motion to approve, to see it next month, in order to put it into the agenda.
I...
And if we get that, and the commission approves it, then we do it next month, and that would be fine.
I know, I'm, I'm not too sure if, this is where we constantly sort of trip ourselves up. I didn't know of the content of this meeting until after the last meeting, so if we perpetually do this, we've now missed the point, unless we're going to hold off on voting for this, because it pertains to this, we're going to be behind eight ball each, each time.
Well, remember, we're not voting on that square building, is an architectural statement. That building is simply shown because they've got to show a building for the sake of the plan, and that's, that's afar prior from having the architect actually draw it up.
Well, it's sort of, it's, you know, what normally happens is, we go, okay, we don't put up a fuss, and basically, it happens down the line, and...
To, to find the difference, though, Bill, again, you have one view of what, you know, an architectural bill, though, maybe some of us do not, but at this point, you know, I don't think we can get into what we feel is, is more aesthetic to our eye than what you find.
Well, no, it's, it's not the aesthetics. It's the, it's the...
We can't get into the debate here about architecture.
And it's, it's not the aesthetics. I don't even agree with many of the aesthetics, even in Columbus.
Right.
It's not what I would necessarily design or want to, but it's the effort, it's the insight, and the, and sort of champion, it's like the right to speak. You don't necessarily like what someone's saying, but you, you champion their right to say it, and it's the same thing here, and they're giving it this effort. But I don't know why the, the video would be so much different from whether we're talking now, or we hold up a sketch, or I hold up a magazine. Why is that so different?
I'm sure it is, but, but, you know...
Because we are going to incorporate it into the program that the people are going to see, unless it has to be on the agenda.
But there's also, if I may interject something, there's also a legal distinction here, that we have to be very careful. These proceedings are quasi-juridicial, and normally, it follows the rules of the court, not necessarily 100% the rule of evidence, as in a criminal court or a civil court, but there is a process that has to be followed. Normally, the applicant comes forward with his application, and provides the evidence, and the justification, and a basis for you to approve or disapprove, and that goes back and forth. I, I caution, this, this time around is, is not a big, big deal, because it happens to be the city, you know, submitting an application, but legally speaking, I would forbid the entering of evidence by any of the board members, because it's, it's not proper. You're free to rebut the evidence, but to present your own, your own evidence in a quasi-juridicial proceeding against or in favor of an applicant, I don't think it's, it's proper.
See, here's the difference, Bill. By presenting the video at this point, it becomes evidence, which we're barred from introducing on our own. Now, we can schedule the video next month, and that would not be quasi-judicial, and that would be a springboard to a future design concept.
And, yeah...
But doing it here makes it evidentiary in the context of this agenda item, and we can't introduce evidence.
Okay, can we, can we take the vote on this, and then just show this as supplemental to our meeting, especially since we have so much time?
We, we can do it for next month. It has to be advertised.
Why does it have to be, what is it, why would it have to be?
Because it needs to be advertised. Is that correct, sir?
But not everything we say is...
Well, first of all, I don't have the authority to indicate to anyone in the IT department to place something, or to make it available. I, I do not have that authority. The city manager has that authority, I do not.
Will we take the vote, and do we schedule it for next month?
And, and that would be the, the proper procedure, and, and to allow, you know, the forces, the administrative forces that be, the hierarchy, to make a decision on that ultimately, since they're the, the ones responsible for the content. I'm not responsible for that.
I can roll with that.
And also, can we, we cannot, we cannot incorporate your idea right now into this vote. Is that correct? I mean, what he's saying, we can't just stop the meeting and make a motion for that video. Is that allowed, are we allowed to do that, or must we pass the resolution first, and then proceed with his suggestion of looking at this video? In other words, he's...
Well, again, it's...
He wants to present a motion, suffered from the motion that we are about to, to vote on, with accepting this...
I, I don't see the relevancy of the video with a conceptual plan that is, we're, we're not even getting to the details of the building.
That's my, that's what I'm trying to find out.
If that is the point, and I'm not sure that's the point that Mr. Pravatell is, is wanting to make, I, I do not see the relevant, the relevancy of this video in this particular decision or agenda, as a matter of fact.
I understand what you're saying, but what I'm, I'm asking is, he's asked for a motion in the middle of our conversation about this plan. He, he, can he do that, or, or must it, it can't be, obviously, it can't be a part of the overall motion to accept this plan.
Then you have to take whatever's on the record, and, and go with what's on the record right now, which was properly... right now, which was properly advertised and made part of the agenda, and you base your decision on what was presented.
Right.
And that alone. And you're free to watch this video at another time, you know, you bring it in.
Can he bring that up after we take our vote as a part of a new business point of order or an item for discussion?
That should be, that should be allowed, I should think.
Yeah, he can do that, right?
Do you mean, so you're going to make a decision on the video, independent of your decision on...
Yes.
Okay, yes.
As long as they're two separate issues.
As long as they're two separate issues.
And the video is not introduced in evidence at this time tonight, and we're going forward for next month.
Okay, I just want to make sure that it doesn't get mixed in.
Commissioner Privatell, I don't know if, I think he's, please correct me if I'm wrong here. I think you're trying to show something that may help this board in future decisions, right? I mean, it's always...
And right now, and right now, this neighborhood helps this neighborhood. And I think about, you know, why are we here? And I think if anybody's at home, if anybody cares, there's nobody in the audience, zero, in terms of public spectators. But if we're being charged with trying to be in the public interest, and if supposedly we have some, possibly some more insight than anybody miscellaneously taken off the street, then we should probably try to implement that. We should probably try to put our best foot forward, rather than go, well, they did it again, and it still looks the same, and there's really no effort behind it. I think there's an opportunity for us to finally, and I thought about this today, you know, we're looking at these other locations and such, and I think, wow, how was it that Miami Beach has gotten so much so right for so many years? And, you know, and that's why they have our Moca Museum, because maybe they have their thoughts together. Maybe they have their act together, and we just don't really care. We don't have the insight or the, or the interest in following through on the details. I mean, they have parking garages and municipal things and everything that seems to be hitting, and we don't.
But, Bill, with all due respect, all that's before us tonight is a conditional use permit. We're not, what we can do is, we can schedule this video for next month, and we can use it as a tool to inspire staff to encourage more creative architecture. They're a long way from having that building designed.
This thing is not only designed, it's detailed down to window schedule. I mean, look at this. This is, it's done. It goes out to bid. It's done. It is done.
Yes, it, the landscape, well, the sheet that was referred to, L3A...
The condensers are specified.
That's a, that's a sheet that shows the landscape elevations. And we also have an additional sheet where we had, we presented to DRC.
So the question is, did you design the building?
Yes, it is.
Or is that still conceptual?
It is designed.
Okay, so.
The building is designed, the administration building is designed. The storage tanks are not.
Is it not ready for bid?
It's ready to proceed for permits, which will still go through a round of reviews and comments from city staff.
So there's still the chance to affect the final design?
Yes.
Okay. Gene?
If I may, I have no problem with Mr. Privatell's video, but we have to be cautious with the proper protocol. And, you know, if council have any position, or not in the position to even allow to show the video, that's a problem right there.
All right, so let's deal with the conditional use permit first, because that's the item that was advertised, and that is what is before us. So dealing with the conditional use permit by itself, do we have any issues that address the conditional use permit? And if not, the Chair would call for a motion.
I'd move for approval of the conditional use permit.
Mr. Ennis moves approval. Gene Castor to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
All right, we are forward one. All right, that item carries. Now, at this time, do you wish to make your motion?
I guess to introduce that video. Not, it's not the most spectacular video on the planet, but it might be something to elevate our
All right.
Our insights and our ambitions.
We need to encourage training and new concepts. And so your motion is that we incorporate the video into our July, can we do this in July, or do we conflict with, do we have a calendar? Where are we in July?
The next meeting is July 1st.
Okay, and the city council has nothing going on the 1st? So, I mean, this is, this room is available?
This would be the first Tuesday. The council will meet on the second Tuesday.
Okay, fine. So then, your motion is that we incorporate this video into our agenda for the July meeting?
Please.
All right. We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, very good. Seconded by Jason.
Jason.
I think you want to call you James instead of Jason.
It's fine. I'm used to it.
All right, we have, all right, all in favor of that motion?
Aye.
All right, so that's calendar for next month. So staff needs to arrange that viewing, okay? And if for any reason the pipes break or we don't meet, the staff is authorized to roll it over to the next scheduled meeting. But let's shoot for July, okay? Because traditionally, we do take August off. So we'd like to go ahead and do that, all right? Now, do we have anything else that we have to contend with tonight?
Thank you.
Hearing nothing else, thank you, sir. You can understand, sir, that the commission has an interest in more creative architecture than blockhouses, so give it some thought.
I understand.
You know, a little more creativity is not a bad idea.
Right, I understand. I believe the DRC committee did make comments similar to that, and we did adjust it from what was previously designed.
Somehow, I'm not surprised, you know? The DRC is your design review committee?
Yes, it is.
Yes, blockhouses are kind of passe. They're rather 70s in style. We could do with something a little more modern for the 21st century.
And it's not as if this is necessarily so efficiently designed, where the plumbing is backed up and the circulation is expedited and such. It's not. It's kind of, within the box, it sort of sprawls about and is kind of a little bit clumsy. And maybe that can be, you know, better envisioned and executed to everybody's favor. But particularly, that's an immediate neighborhood.
It is very 70s. It kind of reminds me of the downtown art museum that sits on Flagler Street that nobody can, that is not very public friendly.
Yes, yes, I know. We could certainly do with something. I think if Apple were to design it, we'd get a very different look.
There you go.
But let's, you know, look to something like that as the model, and let's see our video next month. And we would invite you to attend and be part of that discussion next month when we show that video, so that we can maybe have some visioning concepts on where we need to go architecturally.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you.
If there's nothing further to come, yes?
Mr. Chair, the staff wishes to inform the board members that the Downtown Action Plan Forum Number Three workshop, shall we say, is scheduled for Thursday, June 12th, and everyone is invited.
That'll be Thursday, thank you.
Yes, and it will be at the Joe Seltin Center, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., yes.
All right, the access to that is where? From 17th Avenue? I've never actually been there.
You would go West on 135th Street, and it's like a very nice architectural dome-type of building across from the park.
Okay, so, all right.
I've attended each of these so far, and also some over the past years leading up to this. Probably four months ago, there was a call and a submission from the council of various people to sit on this supposed DPAC or this committee. What is the status of that committee?
It's called the DAPAC, D-A-P-A-C, Downtown Advisory, I think, Action Committee.
Actually, okay. There were, names were handed in four months ago. When is the first meeting of this committee? When does their committee have some input when this process is over? Because it's kind of confusing to me that to attend these things and to, I mean, last meeting I was at, to be quite frank, we've seen professional consultants present now for the last three times, or month after month. There were two kids, one from your office and somebody else. Their presentation, which I had suggested we have a competition, far exceeded whatever the professionals had presented. Out of just a random, just, there's just two people submitting on a design competition, had more interest, more of insight, and more of a conclusion than we keep on dragging this along. And I don't know, I don't know why we, we're going to these meetings, everybody says clap, clap, everything's wonderful, and I don't see it. It's the emperor has no clothes. There's no, there's no real, there's no real handling of this, say, here's something that needs to be increased, or decreased, or mitigated, or, you know, evolved, or whatever it might be. Here's a roadway we need to expand, or a park we need to put in, or any of that. There's got to be more than just putting up benches and the bus stops and some lighting. That's all wonderful stuff, but it doesn't really give us a vision for the future, real design sense.
Who are these young people that were presented?
Kent?
The Department, on behalf of the city, put out a competition
Ken?
Named Call for Ideas. And the competition was advertised with the local universities and students and professors alike. And these are the ideas for downtown civic spaces. It's a civic space competition. They can come, they were asked to come back with ideas for civic spaces within the downtown development area. And it's still ongoing. The deadline to submit final submissions is June 13th, after which a panel of judges will decide and evaluate and rank, and there will be one winner, obviously, chosen based on the criteria. And they, that winner will then be presented with the winning prize of an internship, a paid internship with one of the consulting firms, and also would be awarded that at the city council meeting next month.
That's interesting.
It's great that we took, after years of calling for it, to have the design competition, the call for entries. Unfortunately, we released it at the absolute worst time, when the faculties have already set their agendas for what their projects are for that spring semester. We're leading into the final, finals and such, so therefore it's hard to re-geer them. However, the opportunity is there that even though we may have this deadline in June, to possibly reinstate that, maybe a second phase, so that as particularly faculty members that are looking for that first project to sort of kick something off, I think we can get much broader involvement, starting in September, with maybe an October deadline. Doesn't have to be a long time, does not undermine their general practice. So hopefully, we'll be able to have something like that.
All right, we could certainly encourage a design competition, too, for the Winston Water Treatment Plant Office Building. Make it something a little less 70s, a little more 21st century. All right, if there's nothing further to come before this commission, we stand adjourned.
Have a good night, everyone.